Wish to call the order, Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for October the 24th. Good to see each and every one of you here this morning. For prayer and pledge this morning, I've asked Commissioner Charlotte P. to lead that for us. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for our many blessings. Thank you for this opportunity to come together and conduct the county business. Please grant us wisdom in this time and always. Please forgive us of our shortcomings. Be with those that put themselves in harm's way for our safety and our freedom. Lord, please grant us our leaders' wisdom and guidance. In Jesus' name, amen.
Madam Secretary, could you please have a roll call to determine our quorum?
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Ray Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Curtis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Have a quorum for a meeting this morning, October the 24th. This time, ask to have an approval of our minutes, and I'll ask our vice chairman to do so.
Thank you. I have reviewed the minutes of the September 26 meeting and find those to be in good order, and therefore, I make a motion to approve.
A motion approved, we'll have a second. Have the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes have been approved from September the 26th, 2022. We'll go to item five, items withdrawn or deferred. Mr. Demossini, any of those items?
No, sir. Everything's still on.
Right, moving now into item six, with new business. Item A, waiver request. Item one, Jamie Hughes, number 224001, requesting a waiver for a lot of less than five acres on private easement for property located at 680 West Jefferson Pike. Mr. Demossini.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well today. Information provided by the applicant indicates they would like to divide the subject property, which is almost 13 acres, to provide some land to their daughters, about two acres each. The property is currently accessed via a private easement. Mike's kind of highlighting that general area there on the map. Access easements are allowed to accommodate up to three tracks, provided the tracks are at least five acres in size. So, since they're only looking to do a couple of acres for each lot, that was why this particular waiver request was actually submitted. If this is approved, the applicant would need to have a final plat prepared, which would require consideration from the planning commission, just due to the fact that a waiver was required. Seems like a fairly straightforward request. The applicant is present if you have questions for them, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one comment on the surveyor's plat that he has submitted under general survey notes, number six, shows setbacks for Davidson County. Probably will not affect this, but I do want to make sure that they do use Rutherford County regulations.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, but yeah, you're correct. They would have to meet Rutherford County setbacks, and the plat would reflect that if this is approved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Any motion for approval or denial?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this waiver, subject to any staff comments.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number 224001 has been approved. Moving now to item six B, submission for preliminary plan approval. Item one, Kansas subdivision, number 221010, 11 lots on 10.35 acres, zoned RM, located along Kingwood Lane. William Kenzie, applicant. Mr. Demossini?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant plans to divide this property into a total of 11 lots, nine of which would be for new home construction. Lot 11 would contain the existing house, which currently has access and frontage along Kingwood Lane, and lot four would be a detention pond lot. You can see the plat on the big screen behind us. We, staff has several concerns about the proposed rain, excuse me, road and drainage system, as the current design, as shown on this particular plan at least, does not meet county regulations. Just prior to the meeting, we did have a brief discussion with the design engineer, Mr. Bill Huddleston, and you can see there's kind of a kink in the road there. Mike's kind of highlighting it right in that area. That was a concern that we had. Mr. Huddleston also saw that and made some changes to it. It looks like they can, there's the ability to move that road a little bit to the south to help eliminate that, kind of that awkward curve right in there, and that should take care of a lot of the concerns that staff has. There are a few outstanding comments, just from a planning and zoning standpoint, nothing that would hold up any kind of an approval, but I'll let Mike chime in on anything on the road design or drainage that he'd like to.
No, thank you, Doug. Yes, we talked to Bill Huddleston this morning. We're going to possibly move this road down, so it's more of a smooth transition up here and get rid of this little kink. And then, Bill, I just noticed that we told you wrong on the diameter of the cul-de-sac. It actually needs to be 120 feet diameter to get us enough room for a ditches, shoulders. This is going to be a ditch section right of way. We've recently widened the cul-de-sac diameter to a total of 96 feet to meet the fire code. So, our right-of-way for that, we'll need to grow as well to 120 feet diameter for open ditch section roads. If this were curb and gutter, we could do it with 110 feet, so. That's the only other thing. And then, like Doug said, just some minor tweaking, but when we first saw that, I thought that looked like my back after a long weekend of yard work, you know, a little kink in it. So, we can get that worked out, we'll be good.
A big red flag here, when it says in writing, "The design does not meet county regulations."
Well, at the ti, I think what we were referring to at the time was that kink in the road.
At that time, it, this was the most recent plan that we had to review, and there was some disconnect on what we wanted and what they were providing us. So, but we talked it over with Bill, and he's actually provided us with an improved plan this morning. So, it's there, it just needs some fine tuning.
When I write these comments, it's generally a week and, a week or so prior to the meeting, week and a half prior to the meeting, and I don't have the final designs yet. So, a lot of that, that's where that comes from.
And then, the diameter, right-of-way diameter, was our fault. We told them 110 feet, and it should be 120 feet with an open ditch section. That was our mistake.
Is it common practice to take a new design the morning of the meeting?
No, it's not. But one of our concerns, that was primarily our concern, was that kink in the road and what Mike was talking about. Now, of course, you know, I talked, talking with Mr. Huddleston this morning, he said he had noticed that and fixed it, you know, Friday, Saturday, whenever, over the weekend. So, is that, it's not usual that that happens, no. But that was one of the biggest concerns we had, and looking at what they're proposing, that does address our concern, so.
Mr. Chairman, am I seeing this right? All these houses and lots will be on septic individual?
Correct. Conventional septic system, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for a county engineer. We'd had a conversation not long ago regarding some sinkholes, I think, on Kingwood Lane. Is this area affected by any of those flooding concerns?
Yes, actually, and that's something that we will have to work out with the design engineer on the construction drawings. The area that they're showing for their stormwater is a large sinkhole. So, that, they have showed improvements in that area, but you can see this whole area is littered with sinkholes. This is the 2010 flood imagery, so we'll definitely need to make sure that that is not a problem for the new residents or the adjacent property owners. A little bit farther to the north, it gets much worse. In this area to the north, you can kind of see what I'm talking about.
Other questions, commissioners? I'm going to ask Mr. Huddleston to come forward, if that's okay with you at this time. He may have comments that he wants to make to make explanations.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Huddleston's coming forward, Doug, could you refresh my memory and update me on mail kiosk? What are we doing with that?
Yes. One of our comments actually was, they needed to reach out to the U.S. Postal Service to find out if one was going to be required for this. Our understanding, it's anything seven, eight lots or greater is going to require some sort of a centralized mail kiosk area. If that is done, most of the time on larger developments, we already know it's kind of a given, so they'll submit a site plan along with the preliminary plan simultaneously, so we can consider both at the same time. In absence of that, they can submit another plan separate from the preliminary, and we have the ability to look at those and approve those administratively now. So, yeah, when we told them to make that, when we made that comment to them and asked them to reach out to the USPS, their response was they were still looking into it, so I don't have an answer. My guess is they're going to have to, but we'll have to see what they say.
Before Bill starts, with this road shifting to the south, what we've done in other places is done a couple of parallel parking spots along the side of the road with the kiosk behind it. That might give them enough room to put that right there or close to it.
Yeah, this is going to, as small as it is, yeah, you're only, if they do require one, you're only going to need basically two boxes. I think most of their standard boxes are eight per box. So, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming the existing house already has a mailbox, so we'll have to see if they're going to want to make that part of the kiosk or what they'll do.
Good morning, Chairman Reed, members of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Mr. William Kenzie owns this house and this property, and he wants to subdivide it into these few lots. A couple of them will be for his children, and he's going to stay in the house that's on the large lot 11. To that end, he wanted us to move the road a little bit north as we were going through our design process and in the middle of addressing comments, and so we did move it about 20 feet to the north, and then I noticed the kink on Friday, as staff did, so we worked on it over the weekend and got it smoothed out. We had no problem moving the road a little bit south. That will allow us an area for the mail kiosk, so that works out well. We can accommodate the larger right-of-way radius. We have the pavement radius correct, but we showed the 110-foot diameter, and it needs to be 120 feet. That's not a problem. And as far as the sinkhole situation goes, it's not the situation you have north of there, where these sinkholes end up flooding Kingwood Lane. Our main sinkhole is in the back in the northwest corner, and that turns out to be a good place to put our stormwater pond. We're not relying on the sinkhole to drain anything. We are providing an outlet for that pond that would go to the south, at the southwest corner of the property. So, it's almost a coincidence that's where we're putting our stormwater pond, but it's a good spot for it because it's the lowest part of the property. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Questions for Mr. Huddleston? Do appreciate you taking care of the problem while we're on the floor.
Yeah, we noticed it.
I know that's not customary, but I understand that. You know, whenever we see the word preliminary there, I've often said here, I'd like preliminary because I'm always amazed at how we can fix it towards the final.
That's correct.
And that's our purpose.
That's correct. We, our next step, if approved today, would be to prepare construction plans, and that's when we'll be hitting the rest of these details.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I think Commissioner Gooch, do you have a question?
Well, just to be clear, the changes that were made this weekend and this morning, that puts it back into the county codes?
Yes, but I think there'll be some more tweaking made as well. But yeah, the changes that Mr. Huddleston showed us were fairly close to what codes would be. I mean, we haven't had time to verify all that, but before, we'll let anything loose for construction drawings, they'll have to make sure they meet everything.
Just to be sure, if you make the motion that we say with staff comments to be included with this. Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve with staff comments. Motion made with approve staff comments.
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Everwater, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved, Kansas subdivision. Moving now to item two, Sulfur Springs Business Park, 221013, two lots on 157 acres, zoned PUD, located along Sulfur Springs Road, and 840 SFG Murphysboro LLC are the applicants. Mr. Demossini?
Yes, sir, thank you. This property, you'll recall, was rezoned to PUD back in August of this year for an industrial park. Something else you'll notice, the name on your agenda was the Sulfur Springs Business Park. They've updated the name since then, same project. I just didn't want there to be any confusion on that. The first step of this development process is to present the preliminary plan, showing the location of the proposed public street, and also the layout of the lots, as you see on the screen before you. Should this plan be approved, they will be required to submit construction drawings, which will show a lot more detail as far as the road construction, the turn lane improvements, improvements to the intersection over at Leanna Road and Sulfur Springs with the signalization of that. And also, they're going to have to submit, well, they have submitted the site plans. We're reviewing those right now for both lots one and two. These kind of go hand in hand, because a lot of the drainage, the drainage on lots one and two is all kind of coincides with everything else, so we'll be looking at that very closely as well. Most of our comments have been addressed. We have made the applicant aware, but I did want to make sure, I said it here at the meeting, that we want to make sure that the TVA easement, they're showing the existing easement there, but, and the proposed, we know they've had a lot of conversations with TVA. It looks like that's on its way to being changed. But before we allow any kind of vertical construction, building construction, whatnot, to proceed on the site, we will need verification from TVA that that is finalized and that easement has been relocated. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike, if he's got any comments regarding the drainage of the site. I know it was pretty extensive.
Okay. We have been reviewing the stormwater management plan for this development, and if you recall, this is an area that we had concerns with. They are designing two massive stormwater detention ponds that are volume sensitive, and it's kind of what we did out at Sycamore Grove off of Bertleson and Old Nashville Highway. They've got, one pond will be here on lot two for lot one, and it will need an agreement for off-site stormwater system for lot one, and then another extremely large stormwater pond right here. So, what we're trying to do is not just the rate of runoff that you typically see to, you know, pre-development rates of runoff. This is a volume-sensitive area, so we've asked them to oversize these ponds and hold more water back, the volume of water back, and release it slowly, so it does not impact the neighborhood. And hopefully, will provide some relief for the adjacent properties. So, that's what we've been working with the design team on. That's one big thing that we've, we feel better about, is the stormwater management plan, that the two extremely large stormwater management areas. And I should mention that this existing right-of-way frontage road F will need to go to the road board and be abandoned. They'll have to get a waiver of damages from the property owners, and essentially, each side of the right-of-way that's being abandoned has to agree to give up the right-of-way. So, it's the same property owner, it shouldn't be an issue for this development, but that's just an extra hurdle that we have to go through. The new road will be a 60-foot right-of-way commercial, commercial road with turn lanes, and we've asked them to, if you recall from the rezoning meeting, my cursor, to prohibit truck movements to head west on Sulfur Springs, forcing all the semi-tractor trailers to turn east toward the 840. And they have done that, and we've been reviewing those plans and working with them on that. And again, this is a commercial-grade road that will be a public right-of-way. It will be maintained to the county, by the county, but it will be built to commercial standards to handle the heavy truck traffic that we expect on these two sites. And I'll try to help answer any questions if you have any more about stormwater or traffic.
Mike, is this a, going to be a county road, dedicated county road?
Yes, sir. The extension, if I, let me switch over to that area.
I have to ask this question to our, I guess, our county commissioners. This is going to be a heavily trafficked truck road, basically.
Right.
Is this something that the county is obligated to accept, or can it remain a private road for their maintenance?
That's the way it was proposed at the planning commission level and then the county commission level, but we'll build this to TDOT standards. I mean, this will be a very heavy, thick road. It won't be our typical subdivision road. So, I mean, go ahead, Doug.
Well, I mean, like Mike said, in the plan development, it was shown as a public road. If it was just going to be a private road, that would bring in some other potential issues as far as the number of lots, which it's got two, probably wouldn't be that major of an issue, but their plan development pattern book did state it was a public road. So, that kind of a change might necessitate bringing it back through the process, so I don't envision that really being necessary.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, it's going to the road board, and what will they be determining?
So, there is a little stub street of right-of-way on the far, the plan's kind of turned 90 degrees. North is, I guess, the right, if I'm looking the other way. So, this was a little stub street that the, that is in the county highway department's inventory. So, to abandon public right-of-way, you have to go to their road board to ask approval to abandon that, and you have to sign what's called a waiver of damages. You're giving up your rights to that right-of-way.
And so, the, once everything is said and done, the road board would accept this as a county road and maintain it?
Right.
Who is paying for the road?
The developer will pay for the road, every bit of it, the design, construction. We will inspect it to make sure it's done to county standards and TDOT standards. So, there's a lot of inspection that goes along with, you have to prepare the subgrade, you know, proof roll it, make sure it meets compaction requirements, then you have to, you know, put the stone down on lift. So, it's a long drawn-up process that we're reviewing all the time, make sure it's done correctly. So, there's no settlement problems, there's no cracking or anything that issues. We're very protective of our roads that we build these days and make sure that they're done right, because we don't want to hand it over to the highway department and, you know, next year or the year after, it fails, and that looks bad on us. So, we're very protective of these new roads.
Are we proposing asphalt or concrete in that intersection? Or have we got that far yet?
Which intersection are you talking about?
Hickory Lane.
Hickory Lane? I believe it's asphalt.
Okay. I just, with all the turning movements there, and you said to TDOT standards, I know that's a concern of everyone's, that turning and twisting of those trucks in and out.
Right. Okay. There is a sweeping right-turn lane right there, and we can talk with TDOT, because actually, that is part of their controlled access zone, so it will, they will need to review it as well, that intersection.
And that right-turn sweep will actually help some of that situation that we have. It's the, I guess it would be the westbound direction entering the site that would be a pretty extreme turn for those trucks.
Yes, right.
I know that's on your radar, just wanted to see if we got that far yet or not.
We have not, but the proposed road is, I know it's asphalt, but we can, we can talk with the design team and TDOT about that.
Thank you.
And they will be making turn lane improvements on Sulfur Springs, extending the storage there and down here, and then farther down, they're doing, putting in a traffic signal, if you recall. And we'll, because of this little curve, we're going to do an advanced warning sign, flashing light, saying stop, be prepared to stop ahead when the light changes. So, we're going to work with the city of Murphysboro. They maintain a lot of our traffic signals, and we'll work closely with them to make sure it meets all their requirements, so they can maintain it for us. Everything now is done remotely, in-house. They can, they can look at the new traffic signals at city hall, which is incredible, and see if there's an issue. They can, they can address it there before they have to send a crew out to fix the traffic signal.
Just to help me to remember, is this the same property that really this is the only thing that can go there because of the drainage? We talked about maybe the neighborhoods or?
Well, right. Well, there was a lot of discussion about, I mean, regardless of what development went here, there were going to be drainage concerns, there were going to be traffic concerns and things like that. You know, I think ultimately, the planning commission, the county commission recognized that this kind of development, while it's going to have its impacts, may not have had the same amount of impacts as a 200, 300 lot subdivision would, so.
And I remember that on the Burgess property with the senior living, that the drainage solutions would actually help the surrounding properties. Is that a kind of a similar situation here, or?
That's our goal. We always try to make it as better or even better if we can. So, the Burgess property, we're doing 18 detention ponds and two wetlands. So, I mean, we're, yeah, we're trying to get that water, control it, soak it in. This one here, we're, we've got enough storage for two 100-year storm events back-to-back. You could, you know, have a 100-year storm event, rain some more, and then have another storm event and still hold it back. That's our, our goal, is to over-detain that volume, because it's draining to a volume-sensitive area. That's, we're, you know, doing everything we can. But if this were to be developed as a residential subdivision, you know, it would probably come through as a plan development on a step system, and they would try to utilize every square inch of land for houses, step system, and stormwater management area. With the two large warehouses, that gives us more flexibility to, for oversizing our detention.
Does the applicant want to come forward and have anything? Matt? Matt Taylor?
Matt Taylor of SEC. I don't think I've got anything to add. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I think Mike's done a good job, Mike and Doug, both. But I think Mike's done a good job, Mike and Doug, both.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Second.
Have the motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Approved.
Mr. Chairman, could I follow up with one question there, if you don't mind? Doug, is, would it be advisable to conduct or allow those residents in that area to see the site plan as it relates to what we're planning on doing? Is that, is that something that, that we should do or not?
Well, I, I mean, we have the plans in our office. Now, some of the residents in that area have reached out to me. And I've told them, you know, if they want to come to our office and look at the plans, they're more than welcome to do so. We'd be more than happy to sit down with them and kind of explain how the process is gonna move forward now that we've seen the first preliminary plan here and the site plans. They know the site plans are in our office and that they're gonna probably be going to the commission next month. So I don't think it's necessary to have a, a separate meeting to do that. But, I mean, if anybody's at home listening and they'd like to come take a look at the plans, all they need to do is give us a call and we'll set up a time for them to come in.
And if I might add, they submitted the site plans for both lots with this preliminary plan. And we said, whoa, we need to digest this, review this a lot more. The, if you come to our office, you'll see the site plans, both plans were about that thick. And the, the drainage calculations looked like an Atlanta telephone book. I mean, it was pretty thick as well. So we told them, hey, let's wait until we have a chance to review the site plans a little bit more. So we bumped those off and just wanted to move ahead with the preliminary plan. We're, we're being very cautious. But Doug is right. We, anybody that wants to come look at the plans, we'll, we'll even drag the design engineer in and have him explain a little bit better, too.
I think this has always been the procedure, that, you know, anyone that's associated with these, that they are available to be seen within the planning department. All right, we're ready now to move into 6B3, Estates of Burleson, 22, 1014, 21 lots, 13.45 acres, zoned RL, located along Burnston Lane. Cortland Coleman is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We've seen this particular preliminary plan on several different occasions. It was originally approved by the commission back in April of 2019 and then reapproved back in June of last year. At that time, the development contained 12 lots and was utilizing conventional septic systems. The applicant has worked out an arrangement with CUD to add soils to the step system serving the adjacent subdivision to the east, Sycamore Grove, and to utilize it for septic disposal, which increased the lot yield to 21. There will be a separate detention pond. If you recall, when we considered this plat originally, at the very back of the property, there was a residential lot, but it also had a detention pond on it. Our regulations called for it to be on a separate lot, but they didn't want to have a HOA there at the time and, because there was just a handful of lots. So they ended up getting a waiver to that provision. Well, now they're showing it on its own lot, so that waiver is no longer necessary should this be approved. Most of our comments have been addressed. They are gonna have to do a subdivision plat to combine Lot 16, which is their soil area, to the overall, I think it's Lot 54 of Sycamore Grove. But, you know, beyond that, most of our comments have been addressed. This, this plan is actually in pretty good order. Now, they are still gonna have to do construction drawings and all that. But as far as the preliminary plan is concerned, unless Mike has any other comments, it, it seems to be in fairly good order.
So I'd mentioned Sycamore Grove. This is one area that we had concerns with, with this development on Old Nashville Highway. And this is flood imagery from 2010. This is Sycamore Grove in this area here, and the yellow is the Estates of Burleson. So you can see standing water in a lot of places. So what we asked Sycamore Grove to do was to oversize their stormwater management areas to help hold extra water back because it's volume-sensitive. We're doing the same with the Estates of Burleson. You can see there's an area down here that's kinda holding water. We've talked to the design team, and then we've also talked to CUD. And I can't get back to the plan. So they had proposed a long, skinny stormwater management area here, and then another pond in the back here. So this area on CUD's Lot 54 for Sycamore Grove is pretty much unusable for CUD, but we could use that area to increase the size of this stormwater management area here. And that's, we've gotta jump some hoops through CUD's board and the design team and the, the owner of Sycamore Grove to see if we can upsize that. So this Lot 54 has been platted, but we feel that we can get some more area here to upsize this stormwater management area. But like I said, it's, it involves other entities. We've gotta, you know, get approval through CUD's board. And so there's a lot going on this, with this one. But we believe that with this, like Sycamore Grove, and I'll go back to that. And I'm still, like I said, we, we've oversized these stormwater management areas to hold more water back. And from what we've heard from the surrounding neighborhoods, that it's helping the drainage around these, these areas. So if you go back in 2010, you can see this, this whole area held water. And we haven't had another 2010, but we've had several heavy rain events. And this, these ponds, I believe, are, are helping the adjacent properties with their stormwater management area. So, and I'll stress this again, when we have a volume-sensitive area, that, an area that drains to depressions, that does not drain to sinkhole, I mean, doesn't drain to creeks, rivers, and streams, we ask them to oversize and hold back more volume, not just the rate of runoff, but the volume of, of water that's created. So we always try to leave the site, the area better than we found it. And that's, that's kinda what we're doing with Burleson, trying to ask for a little more land back here. Because these lots will have to be filled, you know, this section of the road and, and this area here will, will have to be filled to have lots on it go to the preliminary. But that's just a little behind the scenes. I'm, I'm sorry, I've gone into the weeds. But I just wanna stress that we do everything we can to help stormwater in every area that we see a new development.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up. Mike, what you're saying there on that Lot 21 is that you'd like to enlarge
Yes, sir.
that drainage area. Is, is that a must, in your opinion? Should it be?
Not a must, but it would help, I believe it would help CUD. And see, they can't use this area, they just have to mow it for hay. And they, you know, if, if there's good soil in it, they could use it. But, and I'll go back to, it's not a must, but it's, I'd rather they have more area. I'm always, oversize, 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 overbuild, overbuild the, the stormwater management areas to help improve anything in the area that we can. So it's not a must, but it would greatly improve what we could do with more area to hold back more volume of water.
Mr. Chairman, would a, would a motion to approve with staff comments, including that expansion of that drainage area, be appropriate?
I would think so.
That's my motion.
I have one question before we vote on that, please.
Just, just a moment. We'll, we'll get through with commissioners, and then we'll let you come forward. You were only asking a question anyway, weren't you, Commissioner? Okay. Okay.
My, my question, I hope, is simple. Would the Estates of Burleson assume responsibility for the detention, maintenance of the detention pond on CUD property?
No, it would, it would not be CUD property. It would, what, what I've been told is that original property, even though it's CUD property right now, it would have to go back to the original developer of Sycamore. And then the developer of Sycamore could turn it over to the Estates of Burleson. And they're already in, in close contact and, and negotiation because they are, the Estates of Burleson is gonna be on the Sycamore Grove step system. So they're adding this soils area to the CUD Lot 54 to increase the capacity of the, the step system to handle all these additional lots on the Estates of Burleson. So they're already working together. I just saw it as an opportunity. And it's a low area. Let's, let's oversize it, collect more stormwater. And that's, that's, that's my goal in life. I mean, I can't solve everything, but I'm gonna try.
Mr. Taylor, SCC?
Thank you. Matt Taylor of SCC. I would ask on the motion that that part is not required, because there's a couple of entities there that we just don't control. And I think as Mr. Hughes said, we do meet the requirements, but we're more than happy to try to make the pond larger. If we can go through CUD's board, they relinquish that work, and then we'll definitely approach the neighbor to the, the Sycamore Grove developer. It just, we don't control those people. So if one of those says no, I don't think they would, we wouldn't be able to do that. And we do meet the requirements the way that it is today. But we're more than happy to try to make that bigger and try to help more. So I would ask that we don't make it a requirement, maybe a suggestion. I don't know the exact verbiage on that. I'm sure Mr. Christiansen could correct me there. But we are happy to pursue that. We just don't control those entities.
The design team has already been in negotiation, I believe. They mentioned it to CUD, but it has, like I said, it has to go through their board to get approval to relinquish that. And then the original developer has to transfer it over to the Estates of Burleson developer. So there's some negotiation that has to go on. But like I said, I'm always looking for ways to improve anything and everything around it. So I just kinda threw that out there, hoping to make some improvements.
Mr. Bogal?
I'm just glad we're looking at these collectively and not as two independent sites. But that, those board decisions will clean up the, whose responsibility for maintenance and easements and different
Yes.
things like that.
Right.
So that, that's why those decisions have to be made before it can be
Right.
fully approved, I guess. So however, that motion needs to be adjusted. I agree with you. I think we need to take advantage of, of.
I understand what the engineering firm has come up with, but Mike's suggestion should be our suggestion. And that original motion, I'll repeat it. Move to approve, subject to all staff comments, including the new drainage area.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. This is a relatively small operation here. But as we've seen over the years, this does only have one point of ingress egress. And if there's an issue at Burleson Lane, we're gonna have 18 or 20 households that are gonna be late to work, late to school.
I believe, yeah, Mike, if you pull up the map, yeah. I mean, Burleson Lane on that side, it goes, I'm not sure where, but it goes all the way to the other direction.
Yeah, it's got two, two routes.
It's got a couple of access points out.
But from this particular subdivision, there's no, there's only one way in and one way out. So if you have an accident there at the end of the subdivision on Burleson Lane, everybody else is locked in.
Your point's well taken, Commissioner Whitworth. With their, with the lots, the way are, the way they are around it, there's not really any practical way to get access to the east or even to the north, not even to the west, really. I mean, I don't see how they could get another access point in and out. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying.
I don't think they can.
Yeah.
But I'm just making the comment that, that if something happens, we stuck.
Right.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we call the roll on this one.
I did have a question. Do we need to have Charlotte remove her second?
We had a second.
Okay.
We actually had, we got two things
This was after Jeff's original motion. She had a second. Okay. Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush? I'm sorry. Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Edis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We'll move now into submitted for final plat approvals. Item C, one, Thompson Downs, Section 1, 21, 2051, 32 lots, on 30.72 acres, zoned RL, located along Richland, Richardson Road. WR Thompson Homes LLC, an applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This final plat was originally approved by the planning commission back in July of last year. Final plat approvals are valid for 12 months. If they're not recorded by that time, then the approval lapses. They're getting close to wanting to record this plat. However, it has expired, so they're just bringing this forward for reapproval. Really, nothing has changed. Even if the plat's recorded, there may still be some issues that have to be done before we release lots as far as easements and things like that. But we'll verify that before we release lots. But shouldn't be any issue with reapproving this. So be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion to approve. We have the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thompson Downs has been approved. Item two, Baker Road subdivision, 22, 2054, five lots on 10 acres, zoned RL, located along Baker Road. Dara and Doyle Bradford, applicants. Fire hydrant issue to be discussed. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This plat probably looks familiar to the commission. This was approved by the planning commission back in July. The plat did show a fire hydrant located within 1,000 feet of all lots, which is consistent with our regulations. We were informed soon afterward that although the hydrant is there, it's not operational yet, as CUD is currently in the process of making some water line improvements in that area with the anticipated completion of those this coming spring, 2023. The reason we're bringing this back before you is, if we'd have known about this on the front end, we could have had this discussion. But staff has some concerns about allowing the construction of any houses before the water line improvements are completed and the fire hydrant is functional. So we're okay with the planning commission approving the plat, understanding that the hydrant still is in operation. We don't wanna make them put fire sprinklers inside the homes, which is what we would normally have to do if there wasn't a hydrant within 1,000 feet. But we are okay with planning commission approval, subject to a note provided by CUD being added to the plat regarding those water line improvements. And then we would not release any building permits until the water line improvements are about 60 days out from completion. Because at that point, even if they got a building permit, it's gonna take them, you know, three, four-plus months to get a house constructed. By that time, the hydrant would be operational. So we'll work in conjunction with CUD, as we, we typically do, for the timing of that before allowing this to be released for building permits. Again, we could have had this discussion on the front end had we known at the July meeting that this was the issue. But now that we know about it, we just thought it'd be a good idea to bring it back to you for reapproval.
You just said a letter of occupancy would not be, would not be approved until the water lines were in.
Well, essentially, we would wait until they're about 60 days out to even release for building permits. So by the time a CO came along, certificate of occupancy, the hydrant should be up, operational, and, you know, at that point, it should be fine.
All that makes a lot of sense. Move to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Baker Road subdivision has been approved. Moving to item three, Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 4, 22, 2074, 62 lots on 11.33 acres, zoned PUD, located on, along Brandham Hall Lane. BCMH Tennessee LLC, applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in August of 20 the Planning Commission back in August of twenty-seventeen. This plat is consistent with that approved plan. Uh, this connect, this section, excuse me, will provide a second access point between Davenport Station and Woodruff Cove, which is located to the south. Uh, our comments have been addressed. This plat is in good order. Uh, the only thing I would, uh, mention is that they will have to, uh, submit a new long-term maintenance agreement, uh, for this particular section. The one that they referenced was for Section Two, so they'll just need a, an updated one for this. The, uh, design engineer has indicated that they are aware of that. But as far as any comments are concerned, uh, this, everything's been addressed. This, this plat's in good order.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Davenport Station, Section Three, has been approved. Items D, submitted for site plan approval. Item one, True Gospel Missionary, Missionary Baptist Church reapproval, nineteen thirty fifty-one, construction of a three thousand eight hundred sixty-five square foot community assembly facility with associate parking on three point sixty-two acres, zone RM, located along West Jefferson Pike. True Gospel Missionary Baptist Church is applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, this site plan was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in April of twenty-fifteen. Uh, revisions to the site were approved in September of that same year. Construction never started, so the applicant had the site plan reapproved by the commission back in October of twenty-nineteen. Uh, site plans, uh, similar to plats, they have a little bit longer shelf life, so to speak. Uh, they are valid for eighteen months as opposed to twelve. But, uh, once again, this site plan has expired even from the October twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen meeting. So the applicant's asking for another reapproval of the site. Uh, the site plan hasn't materially changed since two thousand nineteen. Uh, so as far as we're concerned, the plan is in good order. Now, before they move forward, they are gonna have to have a pre-construction meeting and everything with staff, and we'll verify that, uh, everything else, as far as any grading work and everything on the site, is acceptable. But the plan really hasn't changed since twenty-nineteen. It's just the approval lapsed. So they're asking for a reapproval. So be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Please. Have there been any changes in our local regulations since this town that may affect this process, uh, project?
Not, not in our, uh, subdivision regulations as, or, uh, site plan requirements for this. Um, I do have that in my list of things to do to update our, um, regulations, but it does not in, impact or affect this property currently. Or will it? I don't believe it would.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to those staff comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve. We have the second. Mr. Jones, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? True Gospel Missionary Baptist Church reapproval has been approved. Item two, Southern Creations Landscaping, twenty-two, thirty, twenty-three, construction of a twenty-thousand square foot warehouse building for landscaping business on CS, located along Franklin Road, William Hamby, applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the applicant is proposing to expand the existing landscape company on the property. They are showing, as you stated, a twenty thousand square foot structure to be used for storage of landscape, irrigation, and drainage-related material. Uh, we have reviewed this plan and sent a list of changes to the applicant's design engineer. It appears that our comments have been addressed. Uh, I will say that with any plan, uh, I probably should have said this with some of the others, but, uh, they will have to coordinate with Consolidated Utility District as far as, uh, any, uh, water improvements or water service to that area, especially in, in this particular area. I know there's some, some limitations there of what they may want to do. But, uh, that's always something that kind of goes with the staff comments. You know, if it's approved, subject to staff comments, that's always something that, uh, is, is one of the comments that they have to meet all of CUD's requirements. So just wanted to make sure that that was brought out. But, uh, Mike, unless you had anything further, uh, this plan appears to be in good order.
This is on Highway ninety-six, uh, past Puckett and Coleman Hill, um, Southern Creations, and I believe the new building will be tucked way back here.
That's right. And they recently had a plat submitted to our office where they can, this was two different lots, if you remember when the rezoning came through, uh, but they have combined those into one lot.
Move to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second. Have a motion to approve, and a second. Further discussion? Uh, just for clarification, so the new building is back where it will not be seen from the road?
Yeah, it's way off the road. Uh, where Mike's hand, uh, little hand on it, yeah, it's way, way back.
And I don't believe Southern Creations is open to the public either. I think it's just a company they, they go to you. I could be wrong.
Other questions? Have a motion to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Southern Creations Landscaping has been approved. Moving now to item seven, staff reports and other business. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, last month, we had some discussion at the commission regarding water and fire protection regulations. Uh, Mike, I'll drive if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thanks. After the meeting, the, uh, commission asked that we go ahead and, uh, submit the slide deck, just kind of send it out to everybody for further, so they could review it on their own, uh, have some, uh, additional thoughts on it, and we could have some further discussion at this meeting. Uh, we did have a meeting amongst staff, and Chairman Reed was also present. But I'm not gonna go through all this again. You know, if you recall, we talked about our current regulations, some potential changes and things. But, uh, what I really wanna talk about, and like I said, I'm just gonna, not gonna really spend any time on any of this here. But, uh, when we got to the questions for discussion, some of the things we were talking about were the fire hydrant spacing in the more rural areas of the county, and increasing the number of lots requiring the sprinkler systems from greater than two, then to greater than five, to be consistent with what CUD requires for will serve letters, and also our proposed administrative approval for residential subdivisions with five lots or less. So a couple of recommendations that we had after we met amongst staff and Chairman Reed being present, uh, we talked about, uh, one of the things we talked about last month was taking the RL density bonus out of the zoning ordinance. That's something that could be done independent of anything else that we do regarding either the, uh, water line, changing it from five hundred gallons per minute to a thousand gallons per minute, and then looking at the potential for changes to fire hydrant spacing and those kind of issues. It's really, it, it all kind of falls under the same umbrella, if you will. But, uh, that one could be done relatively easily. Now, that would require an amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh, which does require a public hearing here, and then a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners. The thousand gallon per minute requirement, what we ended up discussing there at the meeting, was that we would require that only for developments with six lots or greater. Now, that change would require a change to our subdivision regulations. That stops at the Planning Commission. That doesn't have to go any further. There is a public hearing that has to be held. There has to be thirty days' notice of that public hearing before we can have it. But, uh, those are just a couple of the, the things that did come out of that. We also talked about some possible changes to the planned unit development regulations. Uh, again, it's, there's several things kind of under this umbrella, but, uh, some of these that could move forward, especially that first one with eliminating the RL density bonus from the zoning ordinance. Again, that could be done independent of anything else. So I wanted to at least, uh, kind of make you aware of some of the discussions we've had amongst staff regarding this, and kind of see if you had any other thoughts that you would like to relay to staff of how to, to move forward with some of these issues. So with that, I'll just kind of open up the floor. Well, I guess I'll, I'll be quiet and I'll let the chairman open up the floor for any discussion. Sorry, I'm not trying to usurp your authority there, Mr. Reed.
You're doing a good job. This was, uh, we did sit there and discuss this, and, uh, and Josh was, uh, helped us out quite a bit in going through a lot of this. We're seeing this change, uh, all over the, the county, and we think this would be something that will really, uh, make a difference in what we're doing. Uh, any discussion from any of you? You've seen what we've talked about and, and where we are, and what we're trying to accomplish. Everybody around us has already gone this direction. So what's your feelings? What's your thoughts? Your light went out over there. What about you?
My thoughts are to, uh, approve these recommendations and move them forward.
So we wanna go forward with it. I think it's, I think it's a good move for the county.
So, yes, I'm in favor of having a standard, everybody throughout the county doing things the same way. I do wanna hear, I mean, I am interested to hear from the public's opinion because I think, uh, many of us, I know I am, are sitting here kind of blank and big question mark rolling around in my head, thinking, is there something more to this? It seems so easy, but, uh, you say we will be having a public hearing? We will be listening to public input here?
Yes. Uh, again, for the, and I'll break these down into the two separate, at least for now, for these two particular issues. Anything that deals with the zoning ordinance has to come as a recommendation from the Planning Commission after a public hearing, and then to the full Board of Commissioners. Uh, that's only the case for the zoning ordinance. When it comes to the subdivision regulations, that starts and stops here. We have the public, but we have to have public hearings regardless. So for the eliminating the RL density bonus, it would just be a matter of taking that section out of the, of the zoning ordinance. Really, it's just one section in Chapter Four. You know, we'd make sure that there was nothing else in the ordinance that we would need to, to, to remove along with that. But, um, there, we could have that on, you know, as, as soon as the November, uh, Planning Commission meeting, which is on the fourteenth. Uh, the other, with the subdivision regulations changes, that has to be a public hearing after a thirty-day notice. So at this point, we're probably looking at, you know, December as the earliest we could have that there just because of the, the timeframes involved. Uh, now, if the zoning ordinance, after we have the public hearing before the Planning Commission, it does have to go to the full board. We have to advertise for that as well. So we'd be looking at December for, for that too, so. But to answer your question, that was a long way of saying yes. There'll be public hearings at, at, for all of these.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I remember correctly, um, our current regulation is that there's a fire hydrant every five hundred feet?
A thousand feet. It's, it's the, the way the regulation is, a thousand feet, not five hundred.
Is it going from a, is it going from five hundred feet to a thousand feet, or is it already a thousand feet?
Well, that's part of the discussion as well that we've been having. Now, that's, what we're looking at here is the one thousand gallons per minute requirement, uh, for fire hydrants versus the five hundred, which is what we currently use. Um, we still have to, I think there are some things we need to work out on the fire hydrant spacing itself as far as, do we keep the thousand feet for the areas that are less than the, the sixth, the less than the six lots, five lots or less? Do we keep that as a thousand feet? And then only for a larger subdivision, we make it five hundred feet for the spacing? I think that's something we still kind of need to flesh out. But, uh, but right now, it's a thousand, just counting what.
Got you. Thank you.
I'll take it, so we move on to what we're doing going forward.
Yes, 'cause what I was trying to get into my mind was the thousand gallon per minute versus spa, we were talking spacing and gallon per minute. So if we put the thousand gallon per minute requirement in, and then development occurs, we can close that gap of thousand feet fire hydrant down to five hundred and still meet those requirements by going to the thousand gallon per minute requirement.
I, I believe that's right. Now, Josh, does that sound accurate to you?
I think I was tracking what you're saying. Say that one more time, though.
I don't know that I can.
Okay. Fair enough. I, I think we're right, yeah.
So if we, if we make the move to a thousand gallon per minute, and our current spacing stays at a thousand feet unless it's more lots or, or developed, then, then we can close that spacing down to five hundred foot spacing on the fire hydrants.
That's right. So in, in a rurally, or a less residentially dense area of the county where we have, currently maintain a thousand foot spacing, um, we can leave certain areas at that standard, and then as those areas develop, then we can say, okay, now we have to bring in that five hundred foot spacing to now fill in the gaps where we have more dense residential development.
Right. Without having to go back and upsize the water line or.
Correct. So the, the thousand gallons would be across the board.
Makes sense.
And, and that would, um, you know, like, like you said, that's, that's currently what's going on all the way around us. Um, and so that thousand gallons would just get us to the point where actually setting ga, fire protection or fire flow requirements based on sizing of homes.
Okay. Good. That sounds like we're planning for the future, that if we need to, to decrease that spacing, we don't have to go back and upgrade water lines to do that.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on with this and, and bring it in where we'll have the public hearing is, is what we're talking about there, and, and move on to make these changes and do what we need to do here. Uh, I don't know, did you mention that we had CUD sitting in on that too?
I did not. Uh, thank you. No, I didn't, uh, mention that. But, uh, CUD was actually in the meeting as well. Mr. Will Steele was there with us, I think.
We'll make sure we wasn't stepping beyond our capabilities of what we're trying to do here either. So, uh, they were also involved in what we were discussing as well. Okay? Any other, uh, business or?
Uh, just, uh, just a quick announcement. I want, a couple of quick announcements I wanted to make. Uh, one had to do, I sent an email out regarding the, uh, Planning Commissioner Board of Zoning Field Training, uh, looking at that last week of November, first week of, uh, December. Uh, probably looking, I, I've heard from a few of you, uh, at this point, we're probably looking later in the week, just to be able to accommodate some schedules. But probably Thursday or Friday that week. So in the event that not all of you can make it, it'll be in this room. We would just have a, we would record it. Uh, that way you all could, if those, those who couldn't make it would be able to, uh, view it at a, a different time. We're not planning on, uh, live streaming it or anything, but I just wanted to, to make you aware of that. Just be on the lookout for some more information on that. Uh, and finally, just a quick announcement. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, take this moment to, uh, wish our chairman, Pettis Reed, today's his birthday. Uh, twenty-ninth birthday, again. So, uh, we're very happy to have him here.
A long time ago for twenty-ninth birthday.
So just wanted to, to wish him a happy birthday.
Yeah, I celebrate it in the most unusual places, uh, my birthdays, but I think you appreciate that. Just a reminder, our next Planning Commission meeting will be November the fourteenth, uh, right here, uh, six o'clock PM. So that's when we'll be doing that again. If there's nothing else, I move this meeting adjourned.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the meeting on the twenty-eighth of November is canceled, correct?
Yes. Uh, and thank you for bringing that up. I was gonna make a, a announcement to that effect. Uh, according to our bylaws, the second meeting of the month, the fourth Monday meeting in both November and December is canceled because of the holidays and everything. So we will have one meeting in November, and we will have one meeting in December, both of those being the second Monday of each month. So, uh, yeah, we will not be having the fourth Monday meetings in either November or December.
We used to get, if, uh, an update of, on, built, from building codes on the number of lots and all kinds of information, that lots that were approved, lots that were available, those kinds of things. That still exists, correct?
It does. Yeah, I know I've, do a report, and I know Tanya does as well.
We, we used to get copies of those, and we no longer get those, and I'm just wondering why.
I'd be glad to provide those. I wasn't aware that the Planning Commission was getting those, but I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? If not, we adjourn.